And I didn't get it. Yeah, I noticed that. Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Very nice. Well, I haven't seen you. I haven't, didn't see you. You weren't there, but.
I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. I apologize. Pledge of allegiance, please. Uh, Councilmember Bildurang, can you please?
Yes, ma'am. Hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will have the prayer invocation by Pastor John Poole now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you are willing, would you please join me in prayer? God of heaven and earth, thank you that your mercies are new every morning. We are in constant need of your love and your kindness and forgiveness. God, today we ask for your healing as people and individuals. Would you grant us healing that only comes from you into our minds, into our spirits, into our bodies, into us as a society? Lord, you give us the unwavering call to do justice. You tell us to defend the cause of the fatherless and the widow and the poor, to love the former residing among us, to provide for the hungry, thirsty, and the naked, to love our enemy. Lord, it's overwhelming to do these things in our own strength, so we ask for your courage, your grace, and your mercy, that your strength might fill us and push us forward. May your spirit fill us with hope, remind us that we are to follow your will, to take up the call to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. God, we trust that you are good and that you do good, so we ask for your good for our local, state, and federal governments. God, help these our elected officials here tonight as they allocate the necessary resources for serving the people, creating change, combating poverty, doing justice, and being an example of good to all members of this city. Teach us to be faithful people in these times. Help us to follow in the footsteps of Jesus that we might glorify you as you equip us and this governing body with wisdom, understanding, and everything needed for bringing peace and prosperity to this city. God, grant us your mercy today. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Mintz.
Here.
Councilmember Klink.
Here.
Councilmember Bildurang. Mayor Protem Wright.
Here.
Mayor Ogilvy.
Here.
All present? Okay. And we had closed session with nothing to report. City manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
There is none.
These proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website at www twentyninepalms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going to the city's website and clicking on the meeting agendas link. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
How you doing, sir?
Fine, thank you.
Well, on behalf of the city, we want to thank you for the area you cleaned up, and before we give you this money, can you tell us where you cleaned up at?
Well, Brad Wifey Tyson was supposed to provide the report. It was essentially, we charter Boy Scout Troop Two-Two-Nine, and in this case, the brunt of it was done by his scouts along with Brad, and I believe the area was across from the post office on the lot to the south, or north of the post office in that area, which they've done in the past and done a commendable job.
Well, thank you very much, sir. On behalf of the city and BRTech, I want to present you with this check.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no meetings since the last meeting, since the last city council meeting. Just want to say, belated happy Valentine's Day for all you lovebirds out there, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Went, did the SBCTA and the Measure I Desert, Mountain Desert meetings, both virtual. Lot of money out there for Measure I, so look for the city to be asked to give a list of things that Measure I money will pay, help pay for, so that, and that is all for roads. And SBCTA and both the Mountain Desert are starting the next phase of Highway Three-Ninety-Five widening, and it's in the process of getting right-aways so that they can widen that two-lane dangerous highway to a four-lane. So that's where a lot of the money is going right now, to take care of that. That's it.
Yes, ma'am. I had the Zoom meeting with the League of Cities Public Safety Committee. There is, there is some hope out there for business owners and other folks. The League of Cities is going to recommend to the Sacramento that they repeal Proposition Forty-Seven. There was some other discussion about some other alternate things to do with it, but that's the main one that got, that got through. So hopefully, they're going to change some of the laws that they put in effect on Forty-Seven, and there is some talk in Sacramento for that, so that's a good thing. Also did my State of the Union for, State of the Union, State of the City for Twenty-Twenty-One at the Visitor Center, Project Phoenix. I think it was well-attended. It's, there was a lot of folks there that was from downtown that was there, and I think Eli put together a pretty good presentation with the videos and stuff, so it was, I think it went quite well. And I apologize for all the bad weather. Softball season is here. Every time we start softball, this is what we get, so that's, that's his. We got a game tomorrow at the park if anybody wants to come down. Three-fifteen. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did also attend the State of the City, and also attended JPA. We did it via Zoom, and the big deal is still SB Thirteen-Eighty-Three coming down. They still working out details and that kind of stuff like that, and how to educate everybody on what they need to do and those types of things like that. And want to wish my mom, my oldest son, and my granddaughter happy birthday for February. Thank you.
And I attended the Women's Marine Association luncheon, and really good organization. I know we have plenty of retired female Marines out there with the Marines, and that's a good organization that you really want to look up to. I learned even I thought I was pretty much as good on Marine Corps history, but I was definitely lacking in that. But just a really good time at the luncheon. Then also, I had the pleasure of attending a Family Values Award. The recipient was Mayor Protem McArthur-Wright and his family, and that was really an awesome time also as well. And finally, I went, I participated in the Up Close show with Gary Daniel, and it was really great. I had a really fun time in the show, so this was it for me.
You guys couldn't hear me, could you? Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, so now, on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be acted upon by one motion in the form listed. Any items may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on the consent calendar items prior to the city council action. And so do we have any of the council members that want to have anything removed from the consent calendar? Do we have anyone in the public that would like to have something removed or pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, back to the council.
I'll move for the consent calendar. Second.
Councilmember Klink.
Aye.
Councilmember Bildurang.
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Ogilvy.
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
Okay, and we had no public hearing, discussion, and potential action items. That's to our city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ogilvy. So every year, the Southern California Association of Governments conducts a general assembly and conference in which they ask for a delegate and associate delegate to attend so that they can participate in the resolutions and decisions that they need to make. As you know, if you don't know, the Southern California Association of Governments was established in nineteen sixty-five and is, and is the nation's largest metropolitan planning organization and council of governments representing six counties and more than nineteen million residents. This year, this general assembly is going to be held on Thursday, May fifth, at the JW Marriott Desert Springs Resort and Spa in Palm Desert. It's gonna go, it's gonna be a three-day conference if you want to attend the whole conference, but the actual general assembly will be held on Thursday. So at this time, we're wanting to select a delegate and an alternate delegate to represent the city at their meeting.
Okay.
Is there anyone that's willing to participate as a delegate?
Well, softball is over by then, so I could do that during the day.
I can be an alternative.
Councilmember Mintz and alternate Mayor Ogilvy, is everyone in favor of that? Everyone say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and now we're on to the city wastewater and sewer project. City manager, Mr. Lacino.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Let's kind of queue this up for discussion. So the item in front of you this evening is the sewer, potential sewer project, and as Councilmember Klink mentioned with Measure I, you know, we're in a unique timeframe with more dollars out there for public projects than in typical years, which has necessitated this conversation. So the policy direction and recommendation from staff is question. Does the city want to pursue, pursue the funding with state water in furtherance of the city, citywide sewer project? That's a question. That's, you know, yes or no from a policy perspective. If no, then there may be other policy discussions that the council has. If yes, staff has to, you know, get moving to get the project shovel-ready, and we're anticipating needing authorization of approximately five-hundred thousand dollars for pre-development of the citywide sewer project. However, individual contracts will still come in front of the council. And also, if yes, and I know we have members of the Water District along with staff here this evening, you know, is the city council requests a resolution and support of, and funding commitment from the Twenty-Nine Palms Water District. So just to talk about a little bit of background, the wastewater master plan and the salt nutrient management plan. If the council does recall back two thousand sixteen, the city did adopt the wastewater master plan. It was produced by Kennedy Jenks. They are a consultant with the Water District that the, both the city and the Water District worked together to put together the document. A master plan, just like any planning document, general plan, it's that roadmap. How do you get to that destination that you're looking for? Also, too, the salt nutrient management plan was to assess, you know, one portion of it was to assess the long-term impacts to groundwater from the continued use of septic tanks. And potential, and I'll just use that word potential, potential growth, density, increased density, more growth, more density equals sewer loading, and that is a potential, and I'll use the word potential again, could affect the groundwater. So those are kind of why those plans kind of exist. They do exist. So where, where are we currently in the process? So the current task, you know, city received a grant, you know, several years ago in the making, and this is why this project isn't coming up just today. We, there are steps in place that we're working towards. So we received that nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars from the state, and we're working on, and I know Vicky Bridenstine, I believe, is here with NV Five, working on that feasibility, city versus base treatment plant, so that's part of it. Also, too, a preliminary design report for the collection system. Also within that is our initial study for environmental. Then finally, is financial analysis and outreach, and, and we did a, a public poll. Probauski Research did a public poll for us, and, and that was one of the things, we wanted to get a baseline. What does the public think before we go too far? What do they think, right? And some of the takeaways from the public poll, which were good, people trust the city. The number-one issue is housing, you know, so that was one of the things we just asked generic questions and wanted, you know, input. We didn't lead anybody to that, but the number-one issue was housing. People supported sewers, however, and this is natural, however, when you ask for money, you know, to pay for the sewers, it plummeted, the support plummeted, but I think that, that is natural. Currently, again, what's in process, Project Phoenix monitoring wells have been installed, and they are being monitored, working with the Water District on the monitoring of them, and Project Phoenix through Project Phoenix Funds installed them. Our congressman, Congressman Olbernolte earmarked six-hundred thousand dollars for the further development of our collection system. However, we currently don't have a federal budget, so we're still waiting, you know, for that to hopefully get approved. You know, we've been working on this for several years. You know, we, we have a cooperative agreement with USGS, and the state has committed to one million dollars for this five-year study. It will study our groundwater and the impacts from septic tanks. We're working through the process with state water as we speak on amending our agreement, but it's not a quick process. We continue to collaborate with Twenty-Nine Palms Marine Corps Base on that joint-use facility. And just one thing, just for comparison, and the, and the current tasks, so the council is aware. And I bring up, you know, a few times within, in the, the presentation, you know, my experience, as the council knows, with Yucca Valley and High Desert Water District, to talk about the comparisons. Our groundwater basins, our politics are different than Yucca Valley, but the, but the process is somewhat the same. So I just wanted to add that for comparison. So the system construction cost was a hundred-and-nine million dollars. Seventy-nine million of that was collection, twenty-three million of that was plant, and seven million of that was a pump station. So just gives you, and I'll talk a little later, just to give perspective of that, to what current, current trends are. So the plant, if we look at the plant only, it's about twenty-one percent of the project cost. So the funding opportunity, again, that's what really necessitated this conversation. Need to be shovel-ready. This is that free money that, again, Councilmember Klink brought up with Measure I. Need to be shovel-ready. State Water has received six-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars for septic-to-sewer conversions, with three-hundred-and-fifty-million of that to disadvantaged communities, or DACs, which we are. November this year, need to be a pre-application in, and, and the state wants that to see who and how much, because they're not sure, in my conversation with them, and they are even having this with non-DAC cities, some of that money may roll over to non-DAC cities. Smaller cities, we're not, we don't have the resources that others, other communities have, so we may not be shovel-ready giving the timeframes out there. So November will be a real important time to, to figure out, you know, what the next steps are. No later than March twenty-twenty-three, so basically, one year from now, a full application needs to be into the state. Shovel, shovel-ready again is the key, and, and I, and within the staff report, and every day, more information, you know, gets disseminated to me. I think within the staff report, I put in there fifty-three projects are with, within state water for DAC communities, and that's true. However, only twenty-one of them are septic-to-sewer conversions. So fifty-three are out there, what they said is some of which are planning dollars, which don't count for this, some of which are not septic-to-sewer, you know, projects, or just DAC projects. But only twenty-one are septic-to-sewer projects, including us. And then they want to see, you know, who can accomplish the timeframes, and that's the real key there. The other important dates, June twenty-twenty-four, it's got to be under construction, and twenty, June twenty-twenty-six, it has to be complete. The, the city has put together a draft schedule just to see if it was possible, and it is possible, albeit very tight, but it is possible. The state program can, can fund one-hundred percent of the project, up to a hundred thousand dollars per connection. The early analysis, again, early analysis is, we are within that hundred thousand. High-level analysis of costs, again, we're a very low-level design, so the rough order of magnitude there is a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred million dollars, which includes collection, treatment, and lift stations. And again, very preliminary. If we do not get a hundred percent financing, and I think there's a likelihood that we don't get, you know, we're gonna go after a hundred percent financing, absolutely, but we, we have to, you know, accept the reality potentially that we don't get a hundred percent, and what would that mean is, then there we have the local financial commitment would be needed to fully fund. By way of example, if we get seventy percent of it from grants, we're gonna need thirty percent from other sources. And the goal, and the goal is to fund with the least impact to citizens and businesses. I mean, I think that definitely has to be the goal. There, there are three components of the project, and maybe four. The municipal system, again, the system that the city, you know, would own, the municipal service would own. Then there's the private connection up, up to the property line, which enters your property, right? So that's another component of, of the project. The third component is a monthly bill, very similar to your water bill, right? You get a, you would have to have a monthly bill for operations. Then, then finally, again, maybe, a fourth element, very similar again to the Yucca Valley process, is new roads. One of the things that we did from an analysis perspective in the Yucca Valley project is putting sewers in, sometimes very deep. In all cases, you have to put shoring in, and shoring protects the workers and trenches, right? So, you know, God forbid something doesn't, you know, happen within the trench, and it's slow, and, and, and time is money. And so one of the things we looked at is, hey, just let's feather out the entire road, blow out the road, put it in the sewer, and we have new roads. So that potentially could be a fourth element to the project with negligible cost to the project. The joint-use facility with the Marine Corps Base, so time, timing challenge with the base is, is a real key here. Collaboration with the base started, you know, as early as March two thousand sixteen, this version, I'll say. There has been other discussions of joint use, you know, as early as, you know, mid-two thousands. In two thousand three, that Windsor Kelly report that was done to look at the joint-use facility, at that time had a collection system cost estimate of fifty-one million dollars, okay? So just, and I'll, you know, I have another slide to kind of show the magnitude of cost increases, but again, two thousand three, fifty-one million dollars for collection system. As mentioned earlier in the earlier slide, the Yucca Valley collection system cost, I think, was seventy-nine million dollars. Yeah, seventy-nine million dollars. So you can see where that cost escalation continues through the years. The estimate for the Marine Corps Base plant, for one, one-and-a-quarter MGD plant, is about, well, is a hundred-and-thirty-million dollars. That's what their estimate on that is. They currently have seventy-seven million funded. You know, however, they need that balance, and that balance of forty-five million-ish, I think, is in, is within this current federal budget. But again, there is no federal budget currently. The estimation of it is maybe Oc, April is we'll have a federal budget, but as of today in February, there is no federal budget. And that, that amount does not include city capacity. So part of what we need to do through an MOU perspective, a memorandum of understanding, is to figure out how to add that capacity in the many aspects of that effluent, and there's as many pieces that need to be, you know, are unresolved currently. As mentioned earlier, the complete submission to state water is due no later than March twenty-twenty-three. And I put in there no later than, you know, if we can get it in sooner, that, that is the best opportunity to make sure we can process it, state water can process it as quick as possible. But it needs to have a treatment solution, you know, we've all heard the, the phrase, a bridge to nowhere, right? And if we have our collection system, and we turn in our application in March, we have to have a treatment option, okay? So, or it's not gonna get funded. We have to have a treatment option. So just looking at timing, and timing is an issue, as I just mentioned with the base. The base cannot negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding, a MOU, into the project that's fully funded, which is currently not. So they always get the, you know, the, the attorneys won't allow them, the base, to negotiate anything until there's a project. So in concept, we've agreed, but until we work out the nuts and bolts, we, you know, we're not there yet. And the, the city, you know, to get, to, as mentioned, you know, we can't have a bridge to nowhere. So if you go back to March of next year, March twenty-twenty-three, if we look at a Plan B, if you will, it would take about six months to get us to a thirty percent design for a treatment plant. And currently, what is identified in the preliminary review of a, of the system, you know, Adobe and Amboy would be a location for a treatment plant in the city. But again, it needs six months to, to design to get to March of next year. So what does that mean? We have about four months with the base to kind of get something done. You know, again, they don't have a federal budget, so they can't even, I can't even work through the nuts and bolts of it until they get a federal budget. The federal budget isn't anticipated to April. The federal government is slow. So the reality of this is chances are, if, if the council moves forward with this, with this option of going after this funding, the joint-use facility probably is not gonna be an option in this. But as mentioned earlier, it's only twenty-one percent of the project cost. So I wanted to bring that up from a timing with the base. So the sewer team, as mentioned earlier, Vicky Bridenstine with NV Five is here, and they're working on the, the preliminary design report and the feasibility. Of note, part of the team of NV Five is Carmen Kazner, which she designed the collection system in Yucca Valley, and also a very large system in Havasu, Lake Havasu City, so that, she was part of the. she was part of the team there as well. So experience comes with NV5 on these large septic-to-sewer conversions. Terranova, which is the city's environmental consultant, is is on board, and the council, I think, approved the contract last meeting for them to begin. Wastewater treatment plant, depending on, over the next four months, if we have to move with that, we've got to get a a design team to get the the treatment plant design to a thirty percent design. Why a thirty percent design? If we go out for a design build, we need to get to at least a thirty percent design. We need an extension of staff as an expert. Travis, myself, and other members of the team, you know, our expertise in sewer is very little. So we need, in in working and collaborating with the Water District on their expertise on the water side, we need an expert on our side of the table, again, very similar to Project Phoenix, when we had Tilden Coyle and Charles Abbott and Associates, an extension of staff to make sure that that understands operations of wastewater treatment, that understands design of wastewater treatment, that could be on our side of the table, you know, going through a project, when the engineers and the engineers will do a good job, but nonetheless, you know, in some cases, we need to challenge, you know, to make sure it's right for the city. And and with that, that owner's representative is very important. If, and that's to be determined, I put there, assessment engineers, if there is a need to have to go to the public for participation, assessment engineer would be needed. Financial advisor, one of the, you know, going through the project in Yucca Valley, the number-one question people will ask is, how much does it cost? What we found going through that project, and I remember, you know, early on in the project, maybe very similar to this, going to the Yucca Valley Community Center, and I had to give a presentation on sewers, and nobody really cared about, you know, where the lift stations were, where the collection system was. Ultimately, at the end of the day, how much is, will this cost me? That was the number-one issue, and and we have to overcome that, and that's a, that will be a challenging one. Community buy-in and cost will be a very challenging one. So a financial advisor to be able to model that, to figure out, and so we can answer that question is very important. Then finally, as an outreach consultant, we need to communicate. The whys, the whats, the wheres, the whens, the hows, all those things, we need to communicate. So that would be the team that would be needed to deliver a project. Why do we need the project? And I wanted to kind of, you know, put these down, both as a as a why and a why-not. So the whys, the positives, money is here and now. There may not be any money in the future. Yucca Valley received, you know, twenty-seven million in free money out of a one hundred and nine million dollar project. You know, we need more than that, and again, that money is there today. It removes barriers for growth. The number-one issue with residents is housing. Mr. Clark and I, as we constantly hear from development, and we have a lot of development proposed within the city, that that obstacle of of lack of treatment becomes an issue because the alternative is a packaged treatment plant, which is costly, and both from a an operation perspective and a a capital perspective. It's inevitable. You know, inevitable beings from a sewer system perspective. And I also have also not inevitable on the other side. And the reason I frame that that way is is what we know today, you know, you know, from the manager's perspective, and I'll talk about this next statement there, it will be in our future. It's inevitable. I mean, there's no really evidence that we can avoid that outside of maybe limiting growth, and that's only a possibility all in itself. But I also put that not inevitable and why we shouldn't do it, because there's also nothing that's making us get there, okay? But in the inevitable statement here, again, there's no evidence in California that anybody has avoided, you know, sewer system of our size. The state, and kind of working with them today on this, to kind of give me some data on it, really pointed me to the US EPA. And, you know, it's right on their website, the US EPA kind of looks at septic tanks in the in the entire country and gives a perspective of it. Vermont, Vermont's got the highest amount of septic tanks as a percentage of their disposal systems. I think it's, is it fifty-five percent of the state of Vermont? Has septic tanks in the disposal system, and, you know, I'll put a wager out, if anybody wants to guess, if, don't peek on the slide here, what is the number-one state who has the least amount of septic tanks in it? And if you say California, you're right. So we, in California, have the least amount of septic tanks in the country per state, and it's about ten percent, and it's right on the EPA site. So, you know, that's why, when looking at it from an inevitability perspective, based on, you know, growth, that it probably will lead to that. It is part of basic infrastructure, waters, roads, schools, hospitals, you know, sewer systems are tried and true, and it goes back as far as the Romans. And it's sustainability. It's with protecting our water supply, our most valuable resource. So why shouldn't, well, before I get to why shouldn't we do it, as mentioned earlier, you know, where the Windsor Kelly study is from a collection system, albeit this is both collection and and treatment plant, then even looking at the Yucca Valley project in entirety was one hundred and nine million. And I'm just looking on the low-end side of it as the estimate of one hundred and five million dollars. So I just want to look at it from a simple inflation perspective, compound, three percent. And I know we're in higher inflation today, but it'll hopefully level itself off, but we'll just say three percent. So you can see, in one year, one hundred and fifty million at three percent is four and a half million dollars of extra cost, right? After five million, after five years, it grows to one hundred and sixty-eight million, and that year, another five million dollars of inflation. And again, fast forward to ten years, it's one hundred and ninety-five million dollars, and it goes on, obviously, to fifteen years, two hundred and twenty-six. And that's, this is not like technology. Technology, on the flip side of it, we all buy our TVs now, our big-screen TVs, that once were, you know, two, three thousand dollars, and today, they're two, three hundred dollars. This is not, you know, from a capital perspective, from a public infrastructure perspective, it's going the other way. And I'm just looking at simple inflation. So that's a cost to the project over time. So why, why should we not do the project? Again, to be fair, to kind of put all that, you know, for the council to digest, today, we have no water quality issues. So there's, there's no, you know, sledgehammer coming down our necks to say, you must do this, you know, from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, to do it today. There is no water quality issues. Why should we not do this? Some don't want growth. Again, from the salt nutrient management plan, growth density equals sewer loading. So if we potentially could control growth, then potentially, there wouldn't be a need for a sewer system, and I say potentially. As mentioned earlier, it's not inevitable. There is no regulatory action, so it's not inevitable. Again, there's, I said inevitable and not inevitable, because there is though, there's no impetus to move forward with it, so it's, I wanted to put that both on both sides. The Water District does have approximately eight monitoring wells. However, more is needed to better understand the impact of septic tanks to our groundwater. So that's a correction from my staff report that I've kind of communicated earlier, that there is monitoring wells out there, but more is needed to better understand the impact to our groundwater. And, you know, without a doubt, as mentioned before, affordability will be an issue, and and could impact also the cost of water. So affordability is definitely something that is out there. Why not to do the project? It's an expensive project. So again, kind of, you know, coming full circle to the policy recommendation, you know, does, does the city want to pursue funding with state water and further into the citywide sewer project? And that's yes or no. And again, if it's no, either maybe some other actions that the council wants us to take. But if it's yes, you know, we got to, we got to work on getting our team, that five hundred thousand dollars, as mentioned, can be allocated from ARPA. ARPA, part of ARPA, the three areas of infrastructure emphasis was water, wastewater, and broadband, so it fits in that bucket. And also, if yes, looking to request a resolution of support from the Water District, along with financial commitment as well. So that concludes my staff report, Madam Mayor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the staff?
And Madam Mayor, also, too, again, as mentioned, the Water District General Manager and some of their board members are here, if the council has any questions as well.
Okay, not yet. Okay. Any questions from the public? Any comments?
Mayor Ogilvy, we have three emails that were sent today that needed to be read into the record. I don't have hard copies, but I can read them off the email. But there's also two people that want to speak.
We'll do those that are present.
Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. Thank you for having me, giving me a chance to speak. It may be clear that our desert community is experiencing a drought. The Forty-Nine Palms Canyon Water Channel has not flowed in a few years. Without the little rain we receive, and with the increased usage of water in our city, our water tables are dropping. In order to keep the Indian Cove and Forty-Nine Palms Canyon wells from dropping too fast, we add the poor-quality water from the Mesquite Basin Well. During these years of drought, the only source of recharge to our water table has been from residential and commercial drain fields. The Twenty-Nine Palms Wastewater Management Plan and the Twenty-Nine Palms Groundwater Management Plan, 2014, both credit that our drain fields with returning water to our sub-basins, thereby slowing the overdraft of our wells. These studies have recommended a five-year study, the SNMP, to determine the best approach to maintaining groundwater levels. This study should be complete before the city removes the water from our yards, which not only return treated water to our aquifer, but also nourish the thousands of trees which depend on this wastewater. Without the water which our drain fields supply, many trees will suffer. The remedy, to remedy the loss of water, homeowners will need to use more irrigation to keep them alive. For homeowners, a viable solution will be the use of gray water from showers and washing machines, which will keep water bills lower. Of course, as homeowners reuse more of their household water, less will be available for the sewer system. It has been estimated in studies that each home could pay nearly four forty thousand, or maybe forty thousand or a hundred thousand per home for the total system, to complete the sewer system. It would be far more useful to create a septic tank district, which would be managed locally to ensure our systems work well. The district would also be able to address the many home systems, which will never be inspected and never be included in the combined sewer system. I understand the timing of the sewer project funding, and and I I understand how the this the saline nutrient management plan is, has been accepted by the city council. But I feel that in a desert where where there has been no evidence of septic tank incursion, septic water incursion into our water table, it's important to consider the value of our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna O'Hare, Twenty-Nine Palms. I'm a little concerned at this point. Like everybody in this world, we're concerned over the quality of our water. I don't think we need to do another study on water quality. The Water District has studied it enough already. Second of all, a reminder to all, all of the people here, that this grant that is being given to us by the state of California is not free. It is a reimbursement of our tax dollar. From an accounting point of view, you're moving it from one end of the ledger to the other. It's still our tax dollar. I'm not against it, but I would just, I hate the word "free" because it isn't. So that's that. Now, also, often, in the past, we've often talked about working with the base on the issues of the septic system. Forget the base. Let the military do their thing. We have to be engaged ourselves. If that base closes down or gets smaller, we're going to be up a creek. Now, there's two other things. The decision apparently has to be decided by November 22 of this year. That's too soon, unfortunately. I feel like the team that did the Yucca Valley remodeling, septic, sewer, all of that business, needs, we need to have a session with them here in Twenty-Nine Palms to discuss not only what went right, but what went wrong, and what do they see now that they didn't see then? Just a professional review of what worked, what doesn't work. And finally, it's too fast. I'm all for it. I'm all for, I hate septic tanks, but, on the other hand, there's no good answer. Either way, we have to tear up our roads, we have to tax the citizens who have houses, we have to do exactly what Yucca Valley did. So I think we need to have a special session where the engineers or whoever from Yucca Valley come into Twenty-Nine Palms, sit down, and let the citizens, ask them the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, Ms. Biakis.
Okay, this is from Neighbors 29 to the City Council. We need a citywide conservation about growth. Our 2012 general plan states, promote a high quality of life while preserving the city's desert small-town feel. Yet the wastewater and sewer project before city council contains phrases pointing to a level of growth that is out of touch with small-town feel. And we believe it is also out of touch with the majority of Twenty-Nine Palms residents want for our community. Per the staff report, wastewater and sewer at the scale proposed remove a barrier for growth, high-density housing, and dense commercial water users, for example, hotels and restaurants. And as population growth continues and more lands are urbanized, water usage and therefore septic loading within the district service area is anticipated to increase. The city manager uses the word "inevitable" to describe this growth under his project prose. Additionally, the project is quoted at approximately one hundred and fifty to two hundred million dollars. Yet the state grant that our city manager recommends applying for has a pool of three hundred and fifty million dollars to fund multiple grant applications. Receipt of any funding will obligate the city to start building by June 2024 and build in two years. It is unlikely the project would be fully funded by the grant, which means the balance would need to be raised from city residents via a special assessment or a sales tax increase. We agree that some housing development is needed, and we need, and we agree that our water quality needs to be preserved. However, it is premature to rush into a project of this scale solely because of an impending grant deadline. The report itself states that we have not done the monitoring and analysis to determine we need it, under cons. We urge council to oppose the rush on this wastewater and sewer proposal. We do not want to be Yucca Valley.
Then we have... Lowes Moon.
Dear council members, I am very concerned that there is a rush to begin a project, the city wastewater and sewer project, merely to capture monies that may or may not be available. Studies and planning have not been completed, as I understand it. Rushing a project of this size could spell dire consequences for the community that may in the end have to pay the costs both monetarily and culturally. The costs of failing to carefully study and plan growth are enormous and could mean that this community loses the very things that it holds dear and that folks come here to enjoy. Rushing forward, led by the promise of future funding, is a recipe for disaster in my book. Our town and our desert community deserves better. Please consider a thoughtful and more cautious approach for this project. Thank you for your time, Adrian Field.
Then we have one more.
Dear council members, please do not rush to begin the proposed wastewater... please do not rush to begin the proposed wastewater and sewage project before carefully considering the consequences should the funding not be available. The burden on lower-income folks in the community would be untenable. Rushing a large project is never a good idea. Growth is inevitable, but how that growth is managed is the most important factor. Without carefully planning, we may end up as another precious desert community lost to overbuilding and poor planning, losing its heart and all the things that make it unique. Thank you for listening. Olive Toscani.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
I'll go ahead and start. This has been going on for quite a few years. It's not something that we just have just opened up because of this grant that's available. This is the biggest grant that has been available to the city of Twenty-Nine Palms to go towards their wastewater treatment. Back in my earlier years on the council, like it says, in 2003, it was fifty-one million. I think in 2004, when I got on the council, it was pretty close to that as well. And at that time, people were saying, "We don't need sewer, blah, blah, blah." But gosh darn, if we would have done it then, we would probably have it almost all paid for. People would have it all, you know, we would have had to go to the people and say, "Hey, you know, we need some money to help pay for this fifty-one million dollar project. This is what we need." Now, it's going to be a little bit higher because, well, not a little, it's going to be a lot higher because we have waited once again until now it's up to a hundred-and-fifty million. So that's a hundred billion dollars more. So, I just feel that right now, it's a good time to see if we can get this money for the sewer treatment plant. And maybe, you know, we have a lot of visitors, tourists. We might maybe think of a three-quarter percent increase in our sales tax in the city. Yucca Valley did it for theirs and guess what? We, the city of Twenty-Nine Palms residents, are paying for that sewer system down there. We pay for our sales tax down there when we go to Walmart, when we go to Home Depot, when we do this, we do that. We pay for the sales tax down there, so they're getting that money to do their wastewater treatment plant and their thing. So why can't we with the tourists be able to collect some of that money and help pay for it as well? Less cost to our citizens, so... Anybody else talk?
Well, so, when I first came on the council, that was one of the things we always talked about was when we go to sewer, making it as inexpensive as possible for the citizens, you know. And so, because we are a low-income community and that kind of stuff like that, so why wouldn't we try to go after money that's available to help offset the costs? You know, and then like Joe said, as far as going to sales tax and things like that, because just like the study said, nobody wants to pay for it. So, if we could pay for it, then, you know, I think that's something we need to do because the same thing. I remember, you know, going to Yucca Valley and them having to go through their process and how much theirs cost and realizing that the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us, so.
Well, there's a lot of, obviously, a lot of factors. One of the things that I asked the city manager to get for me today was the county. What are they, they obviously, we used to pump our septic tanks here. They took them out east of town. Now, we decreased at least a hundred dollars a load because they had taken the landers. Did they say how long they're going to have that plant or that dumping station there?
Yeah, so it was an interesting, and thank you, council member. You know, it was an educational process and, you know, working with the county today on it. So currently, the Landers landfill, so everybody knows, has their current permit expires in 2072. So it's, you know, fifty years from now. It's a long time, right? However, their disposal site for where the waste haulers go to dispose the septicage has a capacity of two-hundred tons a day. Now, it depends on evaporation as far as the capacity. They said the winter months doesn't evaporate because, you know, like today, we have clouds in the sky, but other months it evaporates quicker. They're at capacity currently. So, what their goal was through the years is Yucca Valley and his Twenty-Nine Palm sewers, it was going to have to be, it was going to be a less of a load on them. However, with growth that's kind of happened, although Yucca Valley is in a sewer system, they're still at capacity. So, and the current permit goes till 2072. So as growth happens without a sewer system, you know, their capacity will be challenged with, because they're already at it.
So, are they just going to say they'll have to send them to the next dumping station, which would add another hundred dollars to each load?
You know, if you can't, if they're at capacity, you know, the haulers can't dump it there. So the alternative is to keep it in their trucks until it's available, I guess, or send it somewhere else, i.e. increase cost. So, yeah.
So, the USGS study, now that's the one we got the grant for a million dollars. And it's a five-year study. They haven't started that because we just haven't, and that was going to study the actual groundwater?
Yeah, and to address the, you know, the comment earlier on it, part of what they were going to do is look at, because it's true, right? Our septic tanks are returning, you know, effluent to our aquifer through the process, the filtration process of the earth. So, there is return to our aquifer from septic tanks. That's without a doubt. And we have General Manager Cole this year, if it's okay with the council, you know, I want to address. I'm sorry?
I said Ray, it's fine. Well, good evening, council. I just want to stand up here, let you ask me questions, but also talk about, you know, there's a lot of talk about water quality. And to the study that we're talking about with USGS and to some of the public comments, yes, water quality has been studied a lot and there are no current issues. What's not studied though, and this is important, is the unsaturated zone. You know, so you have your, you know, your ground level, you have where your water is, how many feet below ground. And yes, this is what we test and we see is the water that we can extract. But the unsaturated zone, that's the important part that has never really been studied. You know, some argue that it's inevitable, some argue it's not, you know, I don't know. If I had that crystal ball, I would be picking my lottery tickets tonight, but I just don't. But I think the point is that that data needs to be collected to maybe help that buy-in from the public to say, "Look, this is the study that is done. Even now, we don't have any water quality issues now. Maybe it is inevitable." Because the unsaturated zone is moving down. What happened in the high desert was that, you know, they built a percolation pond, state water. They brought state water in and they were perking that into the ground and in a high-density housing area. So that water that was infiltrating down was attacking or hitting the nitrates and bringing that down as the water table was rising and wham, nitrate levels went through the roof. So again, when we talk about USGS studies or groundwater in general, that's what we don't have. We don't have that study of the unsaturated zone, which I think is important to study. Our aquifers are very protected the way the watershed flows. So even though the water quality may be good now, doesn't mean it's not somewhere else. There's just a lot to it. You know, we have different missions. The city has a mission for growth. Growth is a double-edged sword, especially when it comes to sewer, right? You know, people want affordable housing, but with growth, we're saying we need centralized sewer, which impacts the, you know, the housing. So it's a double-edged sword. It's tough. You know, Water District, from our perspective, it's about sustainability and the protection of that groundwater. You know, so two different missions. So, you know, we've been working together for years and collaborating on some of the projects that City Manager mentioned. The wastewater master plan, the salt nutrient. And the salt nutrient management plan is an ongoing document that goes on for years with no really deadlines to say it must be completed by X. So that suggests that there's no urgency to that, but we keep moving forward and being proactive to study our groundwater. So again, I just want to, you know, stand up here if there's any questions that you have for me in regards to water quality, fire away.
I guess the question I have, because this has been discussed quite a few times, if the plant is built, is, you know, getting the water that's coming out of the plant, it has to go somewhere. So when that goes back into the, back into the earth, is just pumped out there into a pond, does that, it just percolates back into the system, but it's already been purified, right?
Correct. And that's a very important issue when we talk about wastewater. You know, the thing about the joint use that we've always said is that that's a far way from where the water may have to come back to for recharge. We still don't know the answer to those questions. Where is the best location throughout the district to possibly recharge that effluent come out of the wastewater plant to recharge our aquifers? You know, where's that location going to be where we're not drawing down maybe nitrates from a high-density area? You know, high desert has seen it. Even Joshua Basin Water District has seen impacts to their wells from the state water that they're importing. You know, again, learning from their mistakes, that's been mentioned. That would be a very important aspect to any part of a wastewater centralized sewer.
To where the wastewater would go, the clean water, I guess, the potable water.
And it's such a double-edged sword, you know. We've shifted a lot of our water production to the Mesquite Springs Aquifer. That's where our fluoride removal plant is. There's abundant amount of water out there. It's high in fluoride. The other problem is that the water table is so high, it's only about seventy feet below ground, that the state might not allow us to recharge that effluent because there's not enough separation. So that's another issue that we're dealing with. Is that the best place? You know, logically, it says it is because that's where we're drawing most of our water. But will it be allowed? Because there's not enough separation between ground level and the existing static water level. So those are some of the dynamics that we just haven't been able to answer yet. You know, we've done infiltration testing. It's ongoing. Just don't know yet. So again, it's a tough decision. Again, economy's a scale. I know City Managers worked very hard about a joint use, but here we are, how many years later? And, you know, we're really not that much further along. I would like to see a city-wide, city-owned facility versus a joint use, but that's just my own personal opinion. So again, if there's any other questions, please feel free.
Saying that the, from the un...
Unsaturated?
Yeah. Is there any tests out there done already or?
No, you know.
And the reason why? If they knew this was going to be a problem?
Very specific testing that has to be done. You know, funding's always an issue. You know, we have so much trouble getting grant funding from the state and it's very frustrating. But the USGS study, USGS is very highly regarded to the work they do. You know, could you get the work done maybe less than another company maybe, but it's valued more when it comes from the USGS? And they do great work, but it comes with a price. You know, the district for years has had policies in place about nitrate infiltration policies. If we see something in our wells, we would react. It's, you know, a proactive approach. You know, the things we've done with the city with the wastewater, the salt nutrient. But no, not specific unsaturated zone testing. No, that has not been done. The monitoring wells that are starting to go in, you know, we use Project Phoenix monitoring wells. It's just another tool for us to look at. But you have to understand that the monitoring wells for Project Phoenix aren't really meant to monitor the groundwater to make sure the facility that the city has installed with their wastewater system is not impacting the groundwater. We have monitoring wells surrounding our evaporation ponds at the fluoride plant. That's just to make sure that those evaporation ponds, which are double-lined, are not leaking. So the monitoring wells are used as a tool to monitor, you know, that project-specific, not really the groundwater quality. You can use it depending on how it's drilled and how it's engineered, but it's not specific to the groundwater that's right there at that site where that monitoring well is drilled, if that makes sense.
I got a question now. So we'd said you got the sewer, the plant, and pipelines, right?
Well, the sewer is the pipelines. The pump station is the third element, you know.
Okay, then what about the collection? Is that at the plant or?
Well, that's the same, yeah. Collection is the pipes, so that's the plant.
Not collection. Once it's been...
Oh, the recharge?
Yeah.
The recharge, and that's the question that has to be answered. So, you have your collection system which brings the sewage to the plant, it's treated. And then that water, they call the effluent, where does that go for recharge? Does it have to go to the Indian Cove area, which is a very far away? Does it have to go to the eastern sub-basin, which is more like, you know, Utah and the highway? Those are the things that we don't know yet. So, you know, from our perspective, the location of a centralized sewer plant has to be considered and what's going to be feasible to use that water for recharge.
Okay, so then we wouldn't have to add a recharge. We would be going to one already.
You would construct recharge ponds or percolation ponds. That would be another aspect of using that effluent to recharge the aquifer. Where that site is, you have to be determined. It could be right there at Utah and, or Adobe and Anboia, as City Manager alludes to, or somewhere else.
So is that a part of the cost too?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah. So, you know, that's why I mentioned about within the affordability aspect of it, you know, water costs could be impacted. So, and that is why Corolo, I think, or not Corolo, an owner's representative would be a great aspect of the project because it could work with both of us, both city and the Water District and the engineers in designing the system to meet the needs of the city and part of which could be, you know, as Mr. Colish mentioned about the extraction side of it and the delivering side of it. You know, because those two things are going to have elements to that and could increase the cost of water as well. So, to solve it, by way of example, if we, you know, and hopefully, Ray, I'm not speaking out of turn here, but if we dispose it and, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we dispose it in one area, okay, and we need to, you know, we're extracting in another area and the water levels are decreasing, maybe we have to deliver more water from this area. And if we have to deliver more water from this area, it's going to cost more money because power is going to push it over here. Could I characterize that?
It's all part of the equation. Absolutely.
So affordability is going to be, is a really component of it. And to what Ray mentioned about the USGS and going back again to Yucca Valley, the USGS report was a big element for Yucca Valley to say to the public outside of the hammer from the regional board, "This is why." I mean, you know, "We're doing this because USGS, the foremost expert on the earth, is telling us we're having an impact and can have an additional impact through growth, and this is why we're doing it." Without that, as mentioned earlier, how do we get the public to say yes? And that's going to be the million-dollar question.
I guess, so what we're looking at then is if we move forward, basically, ARPA would pay the five-hundred thousand dollars and this would get this started. And then obviously, if we weren't successful for the grant, we would obviously have everything in place, but yet we wouldn't have to be, we wouldn't have to start it right then. We could just say, "Okay, well, look, we're ready to go. Let's..." Then we can, we can say, "Are we going to move forward, take it to the voters, or are we going to move forward?" Because obviously, we'd have to take it to the voters because it'd have to be larger than we could ever afford, the city itself. So in other words, we wouldn't, this is, the five-hundred thousand really wouldn't even, isn't going to really cost us anything. It would not, out of the general fund, it's going to cost us, obviously, money we can't spend from ARPA, but it would not cost us, the five-hundred thousand would not cost us out of the general fund.
That is correct.
Well, I do want to make one more comment. I did see some things listed in certain media places that this was Laquino's Sewer Project. And I just want to say that Frank would have been doing remiss on his general manager's job and any general manager would be remiss not to bring this to any council, the fact that the state is bringing this much money available to cities. So, I just, kind of, not that he needs to be defended, he's got thick skin, but I just think it's a little bit disingenuous to him that people think that this is his project. If we, he has to bring it to us to even be considered as policy. So I'm not, like I say, that's about all I want to say about that. Because, you know, we've encouraged, every council that, since I've been here in twelve years, has encouraged staff always to go after money. Travis went after money. We got money for different projects. The only one we've really failed on or didn't get it on was Pioneer Park. You know, there's nine-hundred-and-eighty thousand we got from the state to even get started. Staff went after that. There's a million dollars for this USGS study. They went after it. If they never would have signed a piece of paper to apply for it, we never would have got that money. So, you know, staff goes after lots of money a lot of times, everywhere. And, you know, that's a big pat on the back to them because if they didn't, if they didn't bother doing it, because it's a lot of work, Randy Council down at, when he was doing recreation, he used to just, he used to give us paperwork and paperwork of stuff he's applied for, and all of a sudden, we get... and all of a sudden, we get three-quarters of it. And then all that stuff went right back into the city and for our kids. So, you know, some of this stuff, it's a little disingenuous sometimes to blame one person or, or the staff on, on, if this is going to the public. Because if it didn't go to the public, nobody would even know about it. So, okay, sorry. I did, I got a little carried away.
I would just like to say something as well. You know, we're at a, a fork in the road. We can either push this off to our children or our children's children and, and not take care of it. And when we don't take care of it, the, the price does increase. I remember as a child in Houston, we, I grew up on a sewer system and, septic tank, I'm sorry, and going to a sewer system in Houston as a child. And one of the things I remarked when I first came here to Twenty-Nine Palms, I've always loved it. We used to visit when we were stationed at Camp Pelinton, but I said to my husband, septic tanks here, I, I don't wanna deal with that. And, you know, thirty years later, we, we're still here, and, you know, we have septic tanks and we have the possibility of growing in a positive direction and protecting our water. And I think that, you know, you have to look really far into the future and say, what are you leaving your children and your children's children? And so I think that the city is trying to go in the proper direction, and kudos to you, Frank, for help guiding us in that direction. Anyone else?
Mayor, there was one more email, but it was sent to all of you. I'm guessing that you all read it, so I wouldn't have to read it into the record, from Earl Riser. Did you all receive it?
Go ahead and read it.
You want me to read it?
Yes.
Hello, and thanks for reading this. Both I and my partner are concerned about the upcoming proposal for a large wastewater and sewage project in and around Twenty-Nine Palms. We understand that as the town progresses, attention should be paid to these items. However, it seems that the current proposal to attract funding for this project from a federal grant is putting the cart before the horse. If the project is hurried, corners cut, et cetera, what, what will we end up with? The federal funding is not guaranteed and in fact has to be shared throughout the state. This could leave Twenty-Nine Palms and the surrounding community holding the debt. Let's take some time to consider carefully what is really needed at this time and what the community can afford. Please do not rush into this project and consider the impacts upon the community and our beloved desert environment. Thanks for hearing us out. Paul Pearson and Blanca Martinez.
Thank you. Okay, bring it back to the council.
All right, I just wanna say, I'm gonna keep walking by faith.
I'm, I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Mintz. This is not Lucino's wastewater treatment plant plan. This has been discussed way back in the 2000s, zero, zero, something. There was Mr. Tree and Mr., who else did we have? Hart, and he's, Frank seems to be the one that's really wants to get going on it, because we have brought it up so many times over the years, so. That's what I say.
He got thick skin, he good.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion that the city pursues the state water funding in that we allocate the $500,000 for the sewer project for individual contracts for the city approval, council approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bilderin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Aye.
Mayor O'Gilvy?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
All righty. Future council-initiated items. Are there any items that the council would like to add? All righty.
And, and Madam Mayor, if I could just address one, I think, I think the next meeting, the Veterans Park, we have some current concepts that we could be bringing forward to the council, maybe next meeting. So that, that is probably the next one that is, that is queued up.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Public comments. This is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to remain a professional courteous decorum during this, the comments. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out a name and address slip and give them to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking any actions or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until a consideration of the item on the agenda. Roger Thomas?
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak and hearing me. My name is Roger Thomas, and I help run the Twenty-Nine Palms Farmers Market, and I'm here to give an update on success and how wonderful things have been. I see many council members there, supporting many city members. We are the only farmers market in the Mongol Basin that accepts EBT, and we've heard about our community just tonight in this conversation about low income and different things. It's very important. It grows every single week, and we accept EBT for fresh produce, foods, different things, and it's really made a big difference. Caltech University comes out for their STEM stuff, and they do things with local children. They bring between twelve and fifteen people once a month. They rent hotels, which brings to our T-pit. They shop local stores. They go up in the national park. They do different things. We have had the opportunity, and we're very grateful that we've been able to do this. We have donated several thousand pounds, and I mean several thousand pounds, of fresh produce to local food banks. We have worked with the high school. We have their, it's a high school recruitment, school children. They basically looking for jobs. We only get them for 140 hours each, but we've actually hired a couple of them, and they work there every week after their 140 hours is over. And that, the original funds is a state program that gives the school money, and they're hoping people will just teach them different opportunities, jobs, and they'll eventually get a job, and many of them have. Right now, we currently have four at the market, and we also have two that used to be part of the program that are now working every single week with the market. We've had Twenty-Nine Palms Food Pantry came out, and they give out thousands of diapers. It was a big, big fun thing. I mean, I don't know where they came up with these diapers, but it was great. And they come out and they do different things. The Two Niners, local nonprofit organization, they have a simmy pro football team. They come out, they set up, they've recruited, I believe, eight or nine football players by setting up, and these are local young men in our local community. We host blood drives, and the last one we had, I actually called for an appointment, and they said, sorry, all appointments are full. And so that has been very, very successful. And we've, we've hosted things like trunk or treat, different things. And I wanna talk about moving, and I'll try to hurry and finish this real quick. Over Project Phoenix, been planned for a long time. You all made it happen, and it's better than we ever expected. So kudos to all of you. We've more than expanded, more than 100% our vendors. Now we have more space. So we're growing, and we're growing every week over the next two months. We have so many vendors that we're, we're putting people on waiting lists, because we're just, we're maxed out. It's good. And we get customers every day, or every Saturday, they come and say, thank you, and some that say, this is the biggest event Twenty-Nine Palms has ever had in history. You're consistent, you're here every week, you work with local businesses, it's wonderful, thank you. And so I just wanna thank you guys. I'm giving you a positive update, and we're doing good over there. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Hey, let me know when them pickling cucumbers come in.
What's that?
Some pickling cucumbers.
They're coming. I know cucumbers are hard right now, because they keep freezing and different stuff, so they're, they're just, they're no good. I will, I'll be calling you. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next is the city manager update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll be brief. So, you know, kinda piggybacking off of Councilmember Mintz, I also am on a league policy committee meeting. It's a, a, a trans, Government Transparency and Employee Relations Committee. Couple of things that were discussed, one of which, I'm sure Ms. Fieskes and her city clerk meetings are kinda hearing a lot about, you know, updating the Brown Act. The Brown Act, because of COVID, has changed, you know, a lot of which has, people are conducting Zoom, and maybe will continue doing that. Maybe not so much a council meeting, but you think of SBCTA as an example, right, and other places and other forums. So there's a big push to obviously getting it updated, one of which is things like having your camera stay on, you know, some of what, some people don't have their cameras on, and the mandate to have your cameras on, and to get rid of the old laws of, you know, letting people know exactly where you are located. I.e., current law is, if, you know, Councilmember Clink is an example, you know, couldn't attend the meeting, he would, and he's on vacation, let's say, and he would have to post a, a, a meeting agenda outside of his hotel room for somebody to attend. I mean, that's, I wonder if anybody's ever tried to knock on a hotel door to show up, right? So some laws and things need to be updated, given COVID has kinda transformed the world, and, you know, one of which is, is Brown Act. So that is something that's coming down. The other, and I can't remember what Assembly member, that bill that it was coming from, is council has mandated training for ethics, as you do each, I think it's every two years, I believe, or so. One of the things also they're looking to mandate is financial training. So that was one of the things that was discussed a lot. You know, there's a lot of, as we did tonight, you know, you're allocating resources, and that financial training is important, you know, for the feasibility of the city. So that may be coming down the pike as well. CalPERS, you know, was at our meeting. They had a fantastic year last year in returns. As many of your, you know, if you have investments out there, they had a 21% return last year. They, you know, the discount rate currently, and the discount rate is return, is six and, six and three-quarters. And they hit, you know, 21%. So that was a great thing this year. Now, the fund is up to 80% funded, as a whole, as a whole. The city, as you know, we, we're fully funded, but as a whole, the PERS system is about 80% funded. And it was low at 66%. So it was, we've done, you know, a lot of good changes. You know, 60% is coming from the returns that are out there. Peppera, and Peppera is the new system of pension, you know, we have a two-tiered system. Classics and Peppera, Peppera is the new folks, and it's all up to 50% of the fund. 50% is Peppera, which is a good thing for it. One of the things that was a, a major discussion in this was climate change. So, you know, PERS, you know, may be unfortunate to some. You know, PERS, through their legislative body, is using their investments as a tool to impact change. So, you know, one thing that is good, which there was their policy in the past, was divestment. They've eliminated the divestment. By way of example, tobacco is one of the social conscience industries that PERS didn't like, although it had big returns. They divested from tobacco, because, from a social conscience perspective. But it cost the fund a lot of money. Now they, now, climate change, though, however, they've kinda eliminated divestments. So they're gonna use their money to try to influence without divesting their money, which I think is a good thing, because their, their goal should be to return investment, not, you know, change policy. That's the legislature's job. So those were some of the updates that kinda came out of the policy committee meeting. And, you know, and I just kinda piggybacking off of Mr. Thomas here earlier, and I think our downtown is a success, not only from what we built, but, you know, it's, it's the businesses down there. It's the farmers market. The farmers market was one of those things that started, you know, the activity down there. Now the businesses are getting involved into it, and the Downtown Business Association as well is getting active. So we're, from a staff perspective, you know, you know, the whole cliche, you build it and they will come. We built it, and they're starting to come, and we're seeing it. So it's very exciting, you know, from that transformation down there. And that's all I, my updates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty. This meeting is adjourned.